They can apply into the city program. So it's almost a double dipping type of a situation. At this point, they don't have that program. So that's why we're allowed to extend these services to the city businesses.
Thank you for that, Clara McKeown.
You're welcome.
That might be, that might be an interesting statement. Obviously, the city has the option to run their own program. In the vacuum of not running their own program, should not prevent city residents from participating in the county program. And I have made a lifetime career of making sure people remember that city residents are county residents, too.
And the state CDBG program recognizes that. And that's why they have allowed in the management memorandum that's attached to your board letter, basically to that effect. In addition, the board supervisors do vote on the expenditure of the loan funds. So the loans do come back to you at one, at a point if they are approved. And then, in addition, this item is not to approve the application. So it does not actually approve the loan. It only approves their participation in the program. So they do still have to go through income qualification as a micro enterprise business, and the certification that they have five or fewer employees as required by the guidelines. And they also need to still go through underwriting. So this is only approval or denial of participation.
But make no mistake, if we don't, if I don't give approval, or this board doesn't give approval, then it goes no further.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the point you just made, Bob, that would be like the last paragraph in Merron Burgess' February 12, 2014, I suppose, that in the first body or paragraph, it talks about there could indeed be a conflict of interest. And then the last paragraph, it says, "That being said, an exception can be made after the fact of this merger."
Yes. Basically, what it is, is it's daylighting everything. So that anyone, because it was posted on the agenda, that thought something maybe, what, untoward might be occurring, they were noticed, pursuant to the Brown Act, and could come forward and speak on that. And essentially, is the daylighting what I think the exception provides for.
And then, maybe would be worth just explaining, there's a little bit like, on the front page, the first page of our item, October 14, Department of Planning and Building, second paragraph, it talks about the Merron Burgess' determination, it was not a conflict if they participated in that AFWD, but then it could be if it's a micro enterprise financial assistance.
I'm going to ask Ms. Everler to define that, because I'm not clear on all the acronyms, because there's a lot of them with that CDBG program.
AFWD is the line of support. There's a contract entity that runs the Wustop program or the NorTech Consortium.
And they provide the micro enterprise technical assistance program, which is the one-on-one business counseling. And he submitted, the McBride submitted, an application to the micro enterprise technical assistance program. At that point, the question of whether or not there was a conflict of interest was raised. The department then deferred to Merron Burgess and received the guidance that there was not a conflict of interest if he applied in the program that Alliance for Force Development is administering on behalf of the county. But if he submitted a loan application to the micro enterprise financial assistance program, which is through me, then it would be a conflict of interest.
Which is what the current application is for?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's a little confusing, because there's two different parts of the program, but...
It's a lot of confusion.
Yes.
Do you do that on purpose?
Yes.
Well, obviously, I'm going to refer to as far as counsel, so, you know, although I didn't say it all, I didn't express.
Again, there's two prompts to this. One is that I give my assent, okay? That's specifically set forth in the federal conflict rule, program guidelines. Secondly, that you folks also agree with the proposition. And I don't necessarily think, you can make your decision based on whatever you choose to make it on, but my agreement is based on whether I think a conflict, an impermissible conflict exists. And I don't. I think it's too remote, too attenuated, and I set that forth, I think, very clearly in my letter to you, and also to the program.
Very good. Any other questions?
We may have mentioned several times in the letter from the city administrator stating as such, you know, that there would be no conflict. Would that make this any stronger, or is it a viewpoint? Can you try to use this?
I don't think that would make this any stronger or weaker. Yes.
With or without a letter?
Yeah, with or without a letter. I mean, I'm on a product plan, I make up my own mind. So, that's not a court letter.
I'm a little surprised that we haven't heard the name of the enterprise so far, in
terms of shameless advertising.
Any other questions of board members? All righty, we'll go to the public. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. All righty, well, the action requested is to approve or deny the McBride's participation in the program. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make the motion to approve the application for the grant loan to the McBride, to the CDBG grant.
Let me find that. I've heard of the participation. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All righty, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. Good luck.
Somebody can ask him the name of his business?
Rude Tom Bicycles.
Okay.
Make us proud, Nick, make us proud.
Okay, we're going to move on to 1130.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Gail Norwood, Assistant Director of Planning and Building Services. This is a public hearing. The public hearing is still open and is continuing from last meeting. It's a rezone application. We've already given the staff report on it, so I'll just kind of fill in the details and the questions that were posed at the last meeting. First, there's a matter of correspondence from the applicant, which I believe you have. I'd like to introduce that.
Mr. Chairman, since I was in that last week's meeting, I missed that part of the hearing, and since I have not had an opportunity to listen to the tape of that meeting, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to participate in this part of the song thing to step down. I'm not, you know, recusing myself for any sort of conflict. It's just a matter that if I'm going to vote on this, I should be able to put on the whole record that part of it, and all the city audience. That would be a big crisis.
So, at the last meeting, some questions were asked, and they were answered generally. Specific information is provided in the packet. One was how far the town center for the community of Hurlong is from the project site. The town center was established in 2005 by Board Resolution 0501-2, which is in the packet, and it has the boundary there, but it isn't in the easiest form to read. Because of that, we've also included a graphic illustration of a portion of the lands depicted on that resolution, on that graphic. And it shows the proximity of the project site to the town center of Hurlong. And as you can see, it's approximately 3,500 feet west of the project site. We've also reviewed the assessor parcel number and information identifying the site for accuracy, and have confirmed that there was a clearinghouse, a state clearinghouse notice that goes with the environmental document, at one place, one particular place, identified the wrong parcel number. The initial study that was transmitted to the clearinghouse and the negative declaration and all other parts of it were correct and had the correct address. So this was the one and only error that was identified in our review. And it also has also been confirmed that the project site is not in a Williamsburg contract. With that, I would welcome any questions.
I should have, when we picked up this item, just put a reporter, state that this is a public hearing that was reopened at 1130 continuation of...
Thanks.
Okay, so is there any questions of the board members?
No, I see the applicants are here, and I'd really like to hear from them.
Any questions?
Yes. Gail, this, you know, talking about rezoning this, I mean, if they were just going to use this for the mini-storages, could that be done with this special new commercial zoning zone or not?
There's not a provision in county code to allow use permit, or allow mini-storage with a use permit. So the only zoning district that allows a mini-storage is the town center designation. And so if they, you know, this is the correct application for what they want. If they wanted a mini-storage application, this is the correct zone and correct general plan designation. Of course, it has the issues which you've correctly identified, which is that it's not connected to the community of Hurlong, the town center, this designated for that. But it is the correct zone for a miniStorage warehouse as our rules now. Because of course, we can...
Yeah, I would just like to comment, and they have been at this since, you know, 2012, so. And that was my question to, without changing the zoning by use permit, the answer is no. So I personally don't see any reason why we shouldn't support the applicant. But in any case, is there any other questions?
Okay, all righty. Is there anything from the applicant? Do we hear from the applicant? Do you have any questions of the staff report?
Just a comment that, a few years ago...
Do you want to say your name?
My name is Lawrence Marion. I'm the owner of the property. And I was told by some very active agents, the Jenkins in the area, that there was a community need for this miniStorage facility, and no one has come forth to offer to develop one. So that's when I began the process. And it's a two-part type of property. It would be recreational and boat storage in the back, and then the typical looking miniStorage in the front. And it would be done according to, you know, polling of the needs of the community. So at this point, I'm mostly through the entitlement process, and I'm looking, I'm working with certain developers and financial people to get the process started sometime next year, if it's approved.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the staff report from the audience? Yes, I mean, Spencer?
Well, this information was taken from the staff report, and there are some concerns. Rezoning this parcel to a commercial town center does not change the fact that the parcel is within the approach zone and the overflight zone of the Hurlong Airport. According to the, and this is also, you'll find it in your documents, according to the California Airport Land Use Planning Handbook, this partial, parcel, parcel, is within traffic safety pattern zone six. This zone identifies this parcel within a vicinity of a near runway accidents, and I think they gave 29 percent, 18 to 29 percent of a near runway accident. I don't know if Hurlong has ever had an accident out there. I've never heard of any accident out there, or planes running into each other.
No.
A year, since you've been here?
No.
No. The, Mr. Marion recorded the purchase of this property on May 23, 2005. And this is curious, because, and this isn't the board's fault. The real estate agent advertised this property as zone commercial, and that manufacturing was the possible use, which we all know is not true. That's not your fault. That's not the board's fault. Because the, I've looked at the Hurlong Airport land use plan of 1988, and it doesn't list manufacturing as a use for this parcel. The rezoning to commercial will have a significant effect on the value of this property. There is a difference between commercial property, selling commercial, buying and selling commercial property, as to ag, buying and selling ag property. This, I think that the concern that can we help is looking at is, will this be a precursor to affecting the value of surrounding properties at Hurlong? You've got this island of town center, this commercial area now. And it's obviously not consistent with what's happening out there. The miniStorage sounds great, although staff emphasize, don't focus on miniStorage. And yet, we found 11 pages in the staff's report referring to a miniStorage. And like you said, they aren't obligated, if you put this through, they're not obligated to put a miniStorage out there. But your documents are, it's scattered throughout all the documents, that they, this is a miniStorage issue, that that's what they want to put in. And I think, and we're going to watch this, if you do approve this today, like I say, it affects the value of his property. He paid $45,000, according to public record, for that 10 acres. And if you've ever seen the 10 acres, it's just sagebrush. I mean, anyway, it's, that's again, it's not your fault, but it's just a fact. What, what, I think Mr. Egan said the last meeting about expanding it to include, I think this one's in your packet, Hurlong area. And I've color-coded the area that is now zoned ag. And you'll notice, it's very obvious that it does touch the town center area. If you were to expand, not just make his property commercial, but go ahead and make this whole pink area, or red area, whatever it is, which would include his property and be then adjoining to the now town center area. And if that's what you're going to do, which is kind of a good idea, then that's the two you should be looking at, not making it, him stand out by himself down here. This would be a much better idea, is just to make this whole area town center. So the value of the property, then, would go up for all those people out there. And that's where we're at. Thank you.
And to be clear, the government codes only permits this body today, essentially, to approve or disapprove the recommendation of the planning commission. If, and that's government code 6585-7, if you want to modify the recommendation of the planning commission, it needs to go back to the planning commission for consideration of that proposed modification.
Very good. Okay, are there any other members of the public that have questions about the staff presentation? We'll have, you'll have an opportunity to speak either in favor or against just now. So this is, if you have any questions of the staff presentation. Yes?
Yes, please.
Questions?
I would just like to ask the question, does it need to be zoned town center for this particular miniStorage? Could it be commercial, industrial?
Yes.
Well, why not that? Because wouldn't that fit the, the, who am I talking to?
I will turn it down, it sounds like a promotion.
I just simply think that town center...
There are several zoning districts that allow, they're all commercial. Town center is a commercial district.
Well, the thing about it, it allows a lot more discretion of what can be there. I mean, has there been somebody else that had a town center issue on Highway 395?
For 27 acres?
Well, I'm just simply saying, it allows so many other types of zoning besides just the storage. That's all I want to ask. The question is more involved in that zoning as town center that I'd like to be spoken to or addressed.
There are other zones that allow many storage. I think that answers the question.
I'll say it a third time, yes, there are other zones that allow many storage, that are all commercial. Most of them allow for several different things, as this one does. And the industrial zone obviously allows for a lot more than that. There are no zones that are really limited that allow many storage. So, and, you know, I don't, you can ask the applicant, I don't know how they derived at this decision to make this zone. Presumably, they asked staff what zones? We told them a commercial zone or an industrial zone. CT is the most common commercial zone.
What other zoning?
Industrial zones are light, and there are heavy industrial zone, and, no, there used to be a zone, but, and I believe two other commercial zones, which they also allow for, you know, all kinds of activities conducted within a building. So there, it really isn't, there really isn't a better zone, per se.
But there is other choices.
There is other choices, industrial and other commercial zones.
But I think it's important to understand, we're responding to an application, and the applicant applied for rezoning to this zone, to the C zone, not commercial, not industrial. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Building and Planning Services, my expectation of how this played out was that the property was acquired when in '05 or somewhere thereabouts, taking this Spencer at a word. And at some point thereafter, the decision was made, hey, let's perhaps use this for miniStorage, whereupon came to the county and said, hey, want to put a miniStorage in? Well, we can't do that in that zone. Oh, why not? It was explained that it's not consistent with that particular what ag residential, I think it's called.
Right.
All right. Well, how could I get that done? Well, you'd have to apply for a new zone. Well, how does that work? Where I would expect it was explained, what zone would that be for? And there were choices presented. I wasn't there, I'm guessing.
I wasn't there.
Does this sound about...
But I like your rendition.
Does that sound, I mean, I wasn't there. Maybe the applicant knows.
I'm not willing to spoke to staff, and that staff member's no longer here, but that would be presumably how this would unfold.
Okay.
How many adjacent landowners are there to this, which have been notified as...
Well, all the, everybody within 300 feet is notified. And so, being that these parcels are pretty large, it would be anybody touching.
And five people, 20 people?
Seven.
I don't have the information.
Any of them there here today protesting? So what is the issue?
All right, thanks, Mike. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on, and at this time, we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of the proposed proposal? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of? If the applicant would like to elaborate a bit more on what you plan to do and how you think it will benefit the community, this would be the time to do that.
Also, I want to address the issue about the runway matter, the approach to the airport. That was brought up immediately as soon as we made our application, and they said we would have to work around that, and they gave us guidelines for that. And so that has not been an issue since. With the nature of the project that we're doing, and the amount of people that would be at the site and all that, would not be a problem as far as that runway issue. The other thing I would say is, I've noticed a lot of use in the community for, or needed in the community for recreational storage, as well as personal miniStorage. And it's one of the few communities that doesn't have one. And that is why I feel that even though this wouldn't be as large as some of the typical large city-type storage facilities, it does have a demand here, and it would be built out slowly and accommodating the community needs.
So Larry, this project would be constructed in phases?
It would be about two or three phases.
Two or three phases?
Yeah.
And your intent to start is when?
Sometime next year. I can't give you a real, exactly, because I don't know this guy.
I guess, but you're intending on getting the project off the ground within six, eight months?
Six to 12 at the most.
I think you have a lot of support to get this thing going, it's just we got to get to that point to where everybody's comfortable with it. So, good start.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of that proposal? So we're going to close the public hearing at 11:49 and bring it back. I would, my comments would be that I appreciate you coming to Lassen County, and I appreciate you, your business plan, your investment, and I hope everything works well, and you have my support.
Thank you very much, yes. One question, did this have to go to the airport land use commission?
Well, this is a rezone application, and so there's, they have no control, the airport land use commission has no control over a rezone. The board of supervisors says, when a building permit application comes in, and someone wants to build something, at that point, a staff or the ALC, we have to look at it and decide, is it consistent with the adopted airport land use plan? If it is, the ALC has delegated authority to the department to approve projects and do that. If it's questionable, or marginal, or not allowed by the plan, then it would go to the ALC, and they would make a decision on it. That's for the ministerial parts of the application. This is discretionary, it's the rezone, but the building permits would go to the ALC.
Thank you.
Or, I'm sorry, would be considered by the ALC or its staff. I just spoke a little bit.
Supervisor Alvo has a comment.
A couple of questions. First is, I'm assuming, Maury, you and your staff received this letter here from Lawrence Marion?
Yes.
You guys? And it stated here, like, you've been working on this project for almost two and a half years. Is that about correct?
There's been a lot of timeouts, is my understanding, yes.
And what would, normally, what would something like this take to get to this point?
Well, if all the studies and everything, all the information was available, usually about five to seven months.
Okay. And then, moving on to what Mrs. Spencer was talking about, as far as rather than just have this little isolated spot out here, if we wanted to incorporate, make another finger come out here along the highway to include this, what would that, what would that take?
It'd take direction from this board to do so. And as I said last week, as a planning director, as planner, I'm at ill at ease when there's these sort of spot zonings that occur.
And I'll follow on the green with you, and that's, because, I mean, as it sits right now, I'm probably not going to go forward, just because it's going to be out there isolated. You know, so what would be to, say, come in from the Hurlong Town Center, along the Hurlong access road, and incorporate all of that? I mean, what's the process for that and the timeframe?
Well, the board would have to give direction to staff to do that kind of comprehensive planning along that corridor. And as far as a timeframe, you know, there'd be, obviously, there'd be public meetings, et cetera. So I'd say, again, probably seven to 10 months.
And if those people between here and there who oppose that, I mean, they could have what...
Well, that's the benefit of a... Well, that, that's the benefit of a, of a public process and a comprehensive approach is that you get the, you know, hopefully the majority of the area and the community's input and you make your decision off of that. And sometimes these kind of requests are indicative of a need for that kind of review and...